Can I can I stop meeting Steve?
We're still not lying.
Might need to get off on the laptop.
Have you tried turning it on or not? Abandon the advice.
Just a good last words. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the meeting of the Buckingham Town Council Planning Committee. And let me just count the agendas instead. Right, we start. Are there any apologies for absence, please? Rest in peace with Council Harvey and Council Haydock. Thank you very much indeed.
Accepted.
Yeah, happy to.
I have to accept the apologies. Yep. Um, that.
Can someone have the um aircon on a little bit? It's getting quite toasty.
I've had too much pot down with me. Um, right, item two then, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest, Council Sutcliffe?
I'll declare an interest on the application of the slide up. Chance we may ever want to determine one of them.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. That's noted. Um, and feel the cool air starting to come in. So items three of minutes, um we last met on the fourteenth of July. Um, and uh we all have the minutes, I agree the minutes, I agree the minutes. But there was a slight error. Steve, do you want to take a telephone?
So apologies for the obvious. It seems that some of the, whilst they were, they're factually correct. Some of the responses said things like, um, no objections. Uh, you unanimously agreed with one abstention or nationally agreeing with three abstentions. Clearly that can't be the case. They can't actually have been intentions. So they have now been corrected accordingly. Uh, substantive responses back in saying, we will need to agree that amendment in the minutes.
I should agree that.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Very good.
We can press a second on the vote on your matter.
Um, proposed by Council Davies and seconded by Council Donahue or either way round. Are we all happy to agree? Like you, that was indeed setting you down in this. Will you allow to go for it?
I think so.
Yes.
Been on the shift.
Right, that was a unanimous agreement including from there.
So that might have been agreed if we could just then agree the two amendments.
What was it? The first proposed, I'm going to do it other way around. Proposed of Dr Lisa, uh seconded by Council Davies and all in favour. And very much indeed, yeah, bombs there. It's um, it's a terrible, but very democratic. Right, let's um edge our way forward then into the meeting, the meeting. Item four, planning applications. And we note that we're next, um Buckingham Council, Central and North Buckingham Planning Area Committee meeting on Wednesday, the third of September. And first of October, two thirty, and a Strategic Sites Committee meeting. Thursday, twenty eighth August and Thursday, the thirtieth of September. And to, yeah, I was very pleased to attend on your behalf of the last Buckingham planning area where she meets. The town went on.
I didn't say that.
Didn't feel that good. I suppose that would continue with the. Right, um, so uh, I've been wanting to know if you will, um, have the hearing. It's very, very interesting as I was on. Um, so we have.
Um, can we ask the car to, to turn the, turn the blower down a bit?
Right, have a little bit of a.
Glasses on them so that you can.
Put your ginger paste on it. It will get cooler as the evening goes on.
Oh, wait.
Okay, class, are we all?
We're back together. Okay, we're holding it, we're holding it together.
Thank you very much indeed. Well done, Council Draper. Um, so we have a number about the communities in town of us. Um, and the first two we're going to take together, it's the White Hart Hotel. Um, and we are back to the, the lighting. Um, in town, which is an issue and it's a debate which seems to, which I know we've been up to you, which seems to be about. Um, do we want heaps for the delicate handle it aura of our market town? Um, or are we going kek for leather to encourage lots more people coming to town? So the debate, the floor is open to comments. Council Tribe.
Oh, I can sit down, go online.
Yes.
I think we ought to stick by our guns, um, and not allow this. We already have quite a bit of uh light pollution in the town. Um, and this would just exacerbate it. I've also noticed that some of them are not tilted as the others. And I fear that on other policies around and outside of town. They have been tilted by weather, other means, and therefore end up not being quite as direct as they should be. So I'm still in favour of not allowing uh these uplighters.
Okay, thank you, Council Tribe. Other comments, Council Drake.
Um, I agree with Council Tribe. I think if we allow it to set to pattern, even if we're overruled. I think to, to um not oppose it would allow a lot of other businesses kind of free rein to just say, well, they wouldn't have to do it and you don't have a problem then. So why shouldn't we be allowed to do it? And, you know, light pollution is an issue and it is something that we will be taking up um as part of Environment Committee. Um, because other councils do have uh what they call, what was, what was that policy? Dark skies policies? Um, so I think it would, you know.
Go hand in hand. Thank you very much indeed. So that's a little bit of voice, yes. Carolyn, well, and and just um slightly contrary to um Martin and Lucy there. Buckingham sadly, many, he certainly felt that we quite liked the lighted square, bright lights of Buckingham. We do have reservations about brightness of the different, they are too bright. But we actually thought some lighting over the facade of that rather handsome building is acceptable. Thank you very much, please. Council Manon?
Um, I just um feel that we can go too strongly against um brightening the town up. And I'm not talking about light pollution, but you know, making the town attractive. There's a lot of towns around and about in the country that I feel um look like they're deteriorating and sometimes good lighting, actually on a good building promotes the town well. And I think that um yeah, I I'm, I'm not so against it. Maybe the type of lighting, but lighting the buildings up in itself. Um, I think it's not a bad thing for the town.
Okay, uh, Council Draper, come back then, Council Davies.
So the, the whole, I know we're not discussing dark skies in the front, but um it's, it's about lower level lighting. It's not necessarily having zero lights. I would say it's not zero lights at all, but it's appropriate lighting to the areas. So making sure the pathways are safely lit. Making sure that, you know, people can see where they're going and everything, but so that they're not, you don't have massive bright floodlights shooting up into the sky. Um.
So I, I, you're not against commercial lighting, but
Not, not.
Good way and a good one for building.
Yeah, as, as Karen suggested, you know.
Yeah.
A bit of lighting is okay.
Yes.
But it's the type of lighting and it's really light, the really bright floodlighting pointing straight up the side. Um, rather than, yeah, the way towards the building.
Yeah.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Okay, uh, Council Davies, then, Council Tribe.
So, yeah, I can, I can completely understand um businesses um wanting to um show, show people, the members of the public that are there. Um, having um good lighting outside premises um is, is a good promotion. It shows that people care about it. Once, once then, bulbs start going and um things start, start getting, getting to look scruffy. It, it becomes detrimental, not only to the um street scene, but also to the business itself. Um, I think that the light, lighting they've got is OTT. I think they could have a better scheme which would not be doing up lighters and um therefore um um affecting the dark skies. Um. Um, illuminating the outside of what is a really quite attractive building. Um, but I, I don't believe that the um floodlights that they've got on there at the moment are
Yeah.
Um, in keeping with either the um, the building or being the town.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Council Tribe and then Council Newham.
Yeah, if I may just come back. Yeah, so um, nobody's mentioned, uh, well, Karen's mentioned the, the intensity, but we haven't mentioned lumens here of how much we would like to consider would be acceptable. I think this is a, a cheap and easy way of installing um some very prominent uh lighting. There's no thought that's been putting into it because these are just floodlights. One set, they just illuminate in whatever degrees and quite wide as well. So they have to be um set fairly well to capture it. Most of it um will be going into the sky. Where if it was nicely designed, maybe some down lighters with some focusing on it. That will be so much better.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't have an objection to that as maybe has been mooted around the table, that we're not against it. It has to be in accordance with the town and appropriate
Yeah.
in, in lighting levels and the focusing of it so that it enhances the building um and the surroundings. Thank.
Thank you. Council Newham.
Oh, yeah, it's hard. I think it's where the, the lights are too bright. And I think that they are the reduced and then or voltage or.
No, apparently.
Um, or like it's been suggested, a scheme where it down lighters. But there needs to be a lot more thought going through it. Like Martin says, thinking of.
Yeah, okay. I think we've got the mood on this particular one. Um, so we would it be right to say that we don't object to lighting per se? But not, but it has to be at an appropriate level that enhances the building and fits in with a sort of a, sort of a street scene of our town. Which in this essence of an eighteenth, nineteenth century market town. And we, we will prepare down, and we will suggest down lighting.
And not retrospective.
I'll do it. Um, so.
But we, um, in our comments, um, so we're opposed to lighting within the conservation area.
So I'll do that.
Yeah, we're not opposed to lighting that.
We're not opposed to lighting.
That's within the conservation area. I think it's important to.
Yes.
This historic town.
Yeah. Yeah, right, yes.
Can I be shed a bit of tea what the planning reasons are then for these objections? So I'm not sure what the actual planning reasons are.
Is it sort of a heritage thing? Or?
Could have said we don't like that, but I've not found it as it was stated that
Yeah.
They're too big ones. Um, but I'm not clear what the actual planning reason is.
Okay.
Can you show that it's? We're looking for a, a scheme, a lighting scheme that's in accordance with.
Lighting. Yes.
More sense of scheme to add.
Hang on, policy B E three.
Of the, as we're going to this. I think they will heritage.
And, and I mean Roger, you want to start?
I like the policy.
Roberge theme genius.
But, but you go, is that what I see?
Thank you.
Yes, okay. Um, can we, can we add um
that it's also um with our climate emergency? Um.
The environmental stuff.
Environmental stuff of, of light pollution.
I think that's a really good.
Yeah.
Just get it on the agenda, not just. I see there is a policy in about, about light pollution.
Yeah.
And so I think one could quote.
Yeah, I think that's what.
Well, there's not B E three is another one, I'm sure. Yeah, okay. So um, I don't think I'm going to try go all that over again, but appropriate lighting in line with lighting policies to fit the character of the town. Um, and get some environmental stuff in there, so much the better. Because that's, that's what, what would be right for our, for our town. Um, are we, can I say, can I ask if you are in favour of that, which is slightly vague, it would.
Hmm, yeah.
Hands up if you're in favour.
So in favour of that.
Are we opposing, no, you found, yes.
I pose you, I pose you on those.
In favour of the opponent.
Make sure we're not paying on the.
No, no objection to the lighting, but on the, on the thing of it.
No, I don't, we do have objections to lighting.
But no objection to lighting.
Yes.
The lighting is.
But we're opposing this plan.
To lighting.
This plan, right, okay. So can I ask um if we are going to oppose this plan or the grounds that the lighting is inappropriate?
No, do you have any quick point? I'm doing a poll, John. It's policy B E one.
No. Can I just ask? Um, so um, we are going to oppose this particular scheme on the grounds that the lighting is inappropriate and not in line with policy.
B E one.
B E one. And I'm going to fit a little bit of stuff about the even, um, evolution. That environment, yes, yeah.
Light emission, yeah.
So um, all in favour of that objection?
Do we have a try for a second or four?
Oh, yeah. I think we're going to oppose it. I propose it. Lucy seconded it. By Lucy. Stretching ahead, but I, I'm going to introduce the time. You'll have plenty more in your time, I'm sure. Um, so what, who in favour of that objection? And anyone against? And any abstentions? Right, can I just say to you that this, I will do this as a separate one first. Because this is the one that's got to be about, you know, yes, I couldn't get the extensions. Yes, okay, so this is a rapid, the rest of them will follow. Yes, that one will land on your mind, because they.
May I?
Yes, sorry, not to doubt.
Um, just a thought, following on a previous uh meeting this evening. We almost need to have an agreement that they will maintain them and replace lights within a month. You know, or redirect them if they get uh bent, don't we? Because there are lights on buildings around the town that are flickering different colours and stuff and haven't been changed for ages.
Yes, I mean, that feels like a good thing to say, whether that's for the.
It's not a planning thing, but it needs to be, have some sort of agreement because if they're going to put these things in, they're going to need to maintain them. We don't want them one off because that just looks dreadful then. They need to get on it and fix it.
I'm not going that sweet a pater ship.
I don't know how we get that in, how, how we enforce that, but something needs to happen if we can have to do it for breach.
Let's, let's get this, let's get this lighting on this building turned out to an acceptable level.
This is fantastic and they're saying, your building is absolutely awful in the evening because your lights flicker and it's like, email them and say.
Okay, right, thank you. Um, and I'm going to move on to four point three.
I would.
Um, which is the um, very interesting. Um, change of name for W H Smith, because of T G Jones, wasn't it?
Yeah, T G Jones.
Yes, uh, maiden name, so I'm quite proud. Jones at last on a high street.
Did judge for you.
Um, so, um, we'll be interested to know, it seems to me to be a relatively controversial, but I would be interested to have comments from members of the committee. Um, do we have any objections, Council Drake?
No, I think it's incredibly long and I think I'd like to know that we um prove.
Okay.
I'll have each second that.
So proposed by Council Draper and seconded by Council Donahue. Do you, does anybody want to have a big debate about this one?
No, just, just a comment, it's sad to see W H Smith disappear. With us for years and years and years.
I don't know when they started with the rise of the railways, didn't they? So probably the eighty eighties, eighteen ninety.
Yes, it's a very old.
Yes.
Company.
I remember. Right, um, so we have no objection. Can I ask, uh, Council Drake? Please, please, the Council Donahue seconded it. Um, one in favour of? Hands up. Wonderful. And anyone against? No, to answer.
You see with some lighting on it.
It's enough comes from Rome.
Please, please. I noticed that it's, it says it's non illuminated. We, we take a bit of a, one small victory tonight, can I? Um, have I on the four, four point four? Now Piratos Middle Slade Business Food Processing Facility. Um, wanting to grow, by looks of it. Any thoughts on that? Lucy, my, Council Drake, my, my hand up first.
Yeah, yeah, it's really good to see um enhancement in business for the town. It's going to be more jobs. Yeah, more um management. I think it's, yeah, it's right. The, the changes all seem to be, yes, before, you know, um, a sub scheme. Um. Maybe even the problems of it, look, I'm not industrial estate, but they're, they're not hugely outrageous changes.
Yeah, um, yeah, yeah. I did, did I have Council Davies?
I was, I was going to say, I've got, um, I think we should support it.
Yeah. Definitely.
Um, yeah, for any reasons that Council Drake has already said and, and that, yeah, he's funding a local business. They've been, been in the area for quite a number of years and, and it's really good to see that they are um doing well and able to invest in, in um growth.
Yes, very good. Um, Karen?
Yeah, I was just going to agree with what's been said. It's very nice to see that uh business expanding, but also a business with with real um concern for both the environment it's taken, they're perfectly, it's always tidy indeed. And some sensitivity in the design of this extension.
Yeah.
So they are to be highly commended for that. I don't know if the town council award awards for, for thoughtful extensions and thoughtful businesses, but in my view, in our view, they, they, they should get one.
Are we allowed a minute perhaps, or am I just remind ourselves for less? Really good, very good point, yes, because we tend to war horses things, but um, these are crucially important. Considerable. Yes, yes, I love it. Okay, thank you all very much indeed. So um manage to vote on that one? Yes.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Okay, yeah. So we have said before, you did.
Yes, proposed, proposed by Council Donahue, seconded by Alan, Council Alan. Uh, all those in favour?
I thought I proposed it. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, no, you said you supported what Council Draper said.
But to Council Drake, I proposed that we supported it and then you were just like.
Yes, I said, I said, I think we should. Um, we should, um, sorry, I'll be received there. Just, just. Proposed by Council, Council Draper Davies. Um.
Just to make sure the minutes are right.
Yes. Was anybody, nobody was against and was one exception? It was proposed by Council Davies, who was seconded by.
We sympathise.
Okay, proposed by the Crown and seconded by Tony. Is that a must, Tom? Doesn't matter, doesn't matter, that matters. There's no horse for it, so.
Steve is always uh very active. Council Alan would. Thank you very much.
I think it's just my previous term and always did the.
I don't know, I think it's the most entertaining part of the meeting. On that basis then, with the propagation of the brood, second of council, see the votes again.
Yes, okay, both. All in favour?
It's a no, no objection, is that correct?
No objections.
No in support.
Yes.
With support.
Yeah, they're not exactly.
No, it's not, and we're supporting it.
To it and now you could, if anybody gave you could oppose it. Yeah, hands down, there'll be a bit of. And are there any extensions?
Oh, right.
Yeah.
I'll fan down the hat, just to talk right, here we go.
Yeah, yes.
You can't turn the fan down or that.
But it was just happening. Right, I'm going to move on a remote course, let's see. Uh, so Council, Council Tribe, please, we are on public television, so um, it's not Blue Peter. Plus a little bit of Blue Peter down there. Um, item four point five, thirty Granville Road. Um, single story rear extension with a lantern roof. Wrong way, which is wrong. No idea, but it's not, a usual roof lights. No idea. Very imagine if you had higher level than the roof, rich one, instead of, that's a fatality pyramid. Okay.
Oh, it's a, well, what, like a rain skyline.
So, um, thirty Granville Road, do I have any takers for controversy or acceptance?
I think, I wish that we support the application.
Get that written down before I lose it. Council Newham proposes, and who would like to second? Council Donahue will second. Um, support this, but are there any other comments, debates? No, I think we're happy to go with it. So can I ask, um, all in favour of supporting this proposal or if you can vote? Anyone against? No, can't attention, but just your, that's a tough bit of the best. Thank you.
Well, no, we.
Um, and then item four point six, thirty six, any shandals from road. Single story rear and side extensions with landscaping to include tiered retaining walls and removing the existing garage. Um, it's quite interesting because well, that, that's, that's an area that might well flood. And a tiered garden might um be rather helpful, but um any comments or thoughts from wise heads around the table? No. Happy with that, Carolyn?
Yes, we're, we're very happy with it.
Um, Council Davies, did you ask?
And I think it's, as you say, um, making the garden um terrace like that makes it more usable and less likely to um be affected by flooding if the um river does come up that high. Um, I propose we um either have no objections or, or um, or support it, depending on the rest of that. Yep.
I, I get the feeling of meeting, but we would, if anyone against it. So if um, Council Davies proposes, can I have a second of all? Council Donahue. And um, all in favour of?
No objection.
Or no objection.
No, mate, you're relaxed. And that's all we're attending on that.
No objection, we're voting on no objections. Everyone was in favour.
Yes, it's so good, Claire, if this is for no objection.
No objections.
No. Can we see it hands up please? No, no objections. Um, so one in favour of no objections, anybody against? No, and most but. One abstention, thank you much, dear. Thanks, Lucy. So we have to do, we seem so leaving, otherwise people will be one on pace. Right, no, we move into sort of um strange territory. Uh, a little bit spent. So I can do on the screen again. It is, yes, I'm still, I'm getting on my screen, keeps disappearing.
Right.
Yeah, I should be on the desk. But that's it. Right. So for information only, um, it's been done and dusted, which is a certificate of openness for a proposed removal of a conservatory direction of a single story rear extension. So we just have to note that, please.
Mm hmm.
And then, um, it's that time of year when birds hopefully stop nesting, so there are the are a lot of um applications for tree work to be done, and these are all from the University of Buckingham. And and not for consultation. Uh, they have been out of that and I think uh, former Council Cole has uh, has commented. Um, to the effect that the University of Buckingham probably fairly well constituted and vasted trees. For what people around the table feel about these trees, there's not much we can do about it now, but Council's very good.
Um, yeah, I mean, it's a lot of work, but it is for the most part, it's, it's fairly sensible.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the University of Buckingham do have a lot of trees in their area.
Yeah.
Um, and
They're not wild as much as.
They, but not only that, it's, it's a large problem for them to be looked after, so some of them are likely to kind of decline, um, maybe because they don't have the regular. Um.
Oh, yes, yeah, it all looks. Okay, right, so we, we note those, I don't have a vote on this. You all right, Carol?
Yeah, I was just going to comment that um, this looks like regular maintenance, not from the removal of various trees that obviously I complain that they're nice or I think we're going to see a a greater increase in removing. A greater increase in removal of ash trees, because undoubtedly this ash dieback is now affecting. Uh trees, particularly the younger ones. So most of these are just young trees, maybe about ten, fifteen years old, and they are. Being affected badly. Yeah, so we're going to see a loss of it.
Good news is there's notice that some, there've been some ash trees that are now evolved resistant to it, so hopefully for the next. Twenty, thirty years, um we'll see kind of research of the status of the new. Uh, Council Davies?
I think I think some of them were resistant to it already, and others are are gaining immunity somewhere. Which is really, really good. I think it's probably the the um. The the mice, my. My cingam, that's the one.
All the underground magic.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the sooner the better, and otherwise, I was just thinking always about whether we'd be having, which of course now has gone. We're going to have palm trees in. Which would be very odd. Anyway, here we are, weather sort of back to normal. Item five, um planning decisions to receive for information, details of planning decisions made by Buckinghamshire Council. And there were two applications, um the Lost Lorian Mount Pleasant Close, um which we opposed. Um, and and it was a loss of a bungalow, which has been approved by Buckinghamshire Council. And also part man a farm, a caravan, we had no objections, and that's that has been approved. So we just note those, so. And then, um. One which, um. Actually, Mike, remember on our our last meeting, we were talking about this, um uh. What was that, works have been done and just one thing left, which was a window, uh assuming a toilet or bathroom. And um they wanted, um there was something about putting in obscure glazing to make it more sort of um. Dedicated, and I can't think what we did, do we say we didn't?
We didn't have a problem.
And it's been refused, so I can't really work it out. Anyway, um that's the um. All you do is recommend, make recommendations, so we note that one. Uh Cooper's War work to all these, my favourite. Um we note that one. And then the the last two, uh which caused caused me a bit of confusion. Um the Nelson, one Nelson Street, where. A proposal came to us last time, which was to turn the, uh what's that, shop window or office window. And for which they can't uh go back into residential use, uh she confirmed that proposal. Um and that um has been refused, but I think it's.
It's a certificate of approval, so they need a problem.
So it's wrong, the wrong form. So they've got to get back in again with that for, sorry.
That does. It can't be done with a certificate of.
Yeah.
Four plans.
Yeah, and I'm now trying to remember what, no objections to the single story rear objection, uh rear extension Highlands Road. And that was refused.
It hasn't been refused, I think.
Well, it hadn't been, no, it wasn't, it um, shall we say that therein was adjusted?
So.
What?
When Catherine did the reports. But one hour this afternoon, it said that it's.
I am all right.
I'm I'm told about correspondence between offices down there, but I don't see it. So when it says that they've sent it to the senior officer with a recommendation for it, usually. Sometimes it gets overturned and I'm not told.
Right, oh, that's good. So there's a.
The tracking system's not perfect.
No, I know, but thanks to you for being part of it, yes. So Highland Road is good to go, and Nelson Street will have just kind of bounced back in again, so that nine of those quite as sort of. Sort of sad.
No, I I I'm happy as we first saw, we saw.
Right, um. Five point two, an appeal on brands of non determination has been lodged for the application avenue lodge. Um, there's a report here, we have discussed this. Is there anything I really would be encouraging the world members to think about, or is it just we?
I don't think that there's, unless members have got something that they've thought of since, I don't think there's anything for me to add to our response on it. Because we thought that it would bring.
Yeah. Thank you.
It's just a question of, um, else we're not threatening round to making a decision if I'm.
Right, okay, that's a timing issue.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, uh this. Um, item six, action reports, uh to note. And I think I can move on from there. Item seven, yeah, um members report any enforcement breaches, damage to turf, if you're done with signage. In the town, says issues for any other urgent matter. That's it.
They. Name of the the businesses escaped me, but the um, the. Estate agents, which is next to what used to be Lloyd's Bank.
Ross, Ross.
Yeah. So paint the building and put new signage up. I noticed today, it's shiny and plasticky.
And walk up town with a camera, definitely, because.
Yeah.
It's the heritage office of the behaviour, it's plastic stuff.
Yeah, I'm really not very enamored with the colour. It makes it very drab, like, I can understand them not wanting a white building. When they get so many fumes, it's acher, and it's very dust and dirt and and things. Um but I think it's, I I, yeah, personally, I don't think it's, it looks great. Um but, um yeah, the the new signage. Appears to be not in keeping with the conservation.
That would be right in our area. It might be listed, or it might be a building of note.
Yeah.
Just to say, where were those signs all around there? Road are to do with silvers and steel. Or like to do with some other event, but they don't seem to disappear much, do they?
It's a road closed sign, isn't it?
To do with, um there's red closure at Buffler's Hall. Believe it's still in place.
No, that's the way.
Yeah.
But I did think there's an issue.
Uh it has been open for a few days. Whether they're coming back, I don't know.
Yeah. Okay, well, we note that.
No, just that it was all the silver side, I'm not sure where they were. Well, you don't know, are they from that or are they from this?
Those were from Buffler's Hall, which was several days last week when it was.
Yes, but it was the same road that closed on Sunday.
They um, the um traffic order on it lasted about eight or nine days, I think, so.
Yeah, they could do. Okay, and the other, the other question, right, Karen?
I don't know if litter comes under other urgent matter. But um I noticed that the bypass road between um Borton Road and Stufford Road. Have ignored the amount of littering today, and I don't know whether they've just cut the verge maybe, and it's all.
Yeah.
But I've really noticed it today, that is not a good sign for approach to our town.
Yes, it's in the gutter, isn't it?
No, it's on the, it's basically all over the verge, about long side of the village.
Yes, I know, I've seen it, yes. I think it probably is they've given a really tight, tight cut.
And when again, right.
In the wintertime, you see, you see all that stuff. Sometimes it gets grown everywhere.
The the weeds, of course, has been on the north east.
So it's probably going to throw extra stuff in, yeah. Okay, what do we do about the portion of this stuff?
I think it's more straight.
It's always a good exercise.
Yes, yes.
It it's always possible. If you attach a photograph of the floor, so if you could take it, put it on your phone or something like that.
Okay, right. Any other, any other items, or shall I move on? Item eight is chairs announcements. Um and I do not have any announcements around the room. Um otherwise, item nine is date of next meeting, we next meet tomorrow, Monday, the twenty second of September. Twenty twenty five.